Maybe if I was hitting the building, I would have gotten the mail. I was checking it all.
Into yap, or in the wet mail. Butter and home is wet mail.
The time is 6:00 PM. Let's call this meeting to order, beginning with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us to 2.01. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to perjure the agenda.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions on that agenda? Great, roll call, please.
Dr. Castro.
Yes.
Dr. Champion?
Yes.
Dr. Dorder?
Yes.
Dr. Easter?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Dr. Peovich? Dr. Sessa?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
That brings us to 3.01. Before reading the president's statement, after the board development meeting that we had last week, I would like to direct our administration, Dr. Morris, to please bring forward, for our next school board meeting, policy number 213 pertaining to public comment. That way, we can have an open discussion regarding what our policy states and make sure that we're actually adhering to our policy moving forward. And that way, if any changes need to be made, we can make changes at that time. And that way, our community has plenty of time to know how to come prepared to address the board beginning in October. So, with that being said, at this time, any member of the audience may address the board with comments about items of interest or concern. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. As a reminder, Iowa law prohibits discussing specific employees or their job performance. Additionally, we caution those making public comments that what they say could violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy. And if you are unsure of the legal effect of your remarks, you should seek independent advice prior to making your comments.
Melissa Zomdo. I live at 3328 Southampton Drive in Bettendorf, Iowa. First off, I was here last week when you were having your workshop as board members, and I did hear the concerns that was brought to the attention about citizen participation in board meetings. So I'm not surprised at all that you have tried to adjust your policy because someone on the board was concerned that, you know, if we have 15 people talking at a board meeting in three minutes apiece, we're not able to get our work done. Well, if you look at the last year of board meetings, you rarely have one or two people that talk at a board meeting. So I'm not really sure what a concern was to that. And the biggest thing for me is, parents speaking at board meetings and their involvement have only been positive and has made such great changes, as such as my shirt that says, "Parents Long in the School." I have heard from many teachers at the middle school who state that since parents have been in the school, it has been a such, it's been a better environment, and they haven't felt so good for almost 15 years. That wouldn't have happened if you didn't have parents coming to board meetings and speaking. So I'd be very cautious of your policy on requiring to know what the agenda is and whatnot because sometimes, parents are so busy, they don't have time to prep ahead and send an email on exactly what they want to say. Sometimes, it's the day of, and I ask you to respect that. Okay? I know that you're only going to give me three minutes, and I might get cut off, but I respect your time because I know you have a job to do. But I did request to have a FOIA recently, and it was basically just asking to have documentation showing what surveys were sent out to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders last year. I'm not asking for specific people, not asking names, just want to know when surveys were sent out and what was asked to students. And I was told that I would be charged $98 an hour while we reviewed that information, and that I would have to almost pay $800 as a deposit to start the process. That's ridiculous. And I know all of you know that, and I'm still waiting for a follow-up, by the way, on revising the fee that you have charged me for wanting transparency. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to speak? This is the time.
My name is Miles Malloy. I live on 2135 Mississippi Boulevard. And I would just like to thank everyone for the surveys that are being passed out. I know that personally, I would... I know I was outed as a child, and I am just glad that that same process is not going to happen to my brother and sister if they were to choose to align with another gender that... Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheila Pizaki. I live at 3130 Halcyon Street in Bettendorf. I'm a teacher here at Bettendorf High School. There are students at the school where I teach for our members of the LGBTQ+ community. I am the vast majority of your teachers, administrators, parents, and community members, support you and care about you. I think we could do a better job of working together to show you that, but I want you to know that I do see you. I care about you and your reality, and I support you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Captain Bogus. I live on 141 East Flora Court, Bettendorf, Iowa. I was informed by some other students who know a lot about the board meetings that there is a party that is against the whole asking students what their background is and saying it's not safe, but it actually does provide the student comfort in safety, knowing that if one person needs to accept them and welcome them, they're open-minded, and to also allow them to just have a better school experience. I do believe that we should still keep up policy now and for the future years of Bettendorf High School, just so that it allows kids to have a safe and enjoyable time during their four years of high school.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak can come forward at this time. Okay, thank you to everyone who came forward to share. We will move on to 3.02, Board Shared Communication. Dr. Dorder, can we begin with you?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lynch?
I had a great time earlier this week at the Run With Carl. It was great to get to support our schools, and it was a beautiful day for walking along the Duck Creek Trail. And I thank everybody from the city, the police department, the community foundations, who make that happen every year.
Thank you, Dr. Lynch. Dr. Champion?
I just want to comment a couple things. I've been stopped three times, once at a work event last night from staff and parents at the middle school, and it was, they were commenting on, it's become evident to them how work was done over the summer and all the programming changes and staffing changes, and they were just appreciative. And there seems to be understanding that things may happen, but they are confident there's enough staffing in that building to address it. So it was just nice to hear those things when it was in conversations I had solicited that came around me. And then, I am not a big social media person. I don't really routinely use it or log in. I was shown some screenshots of some Facebook posts in reference to Wendy Meyer being at board meetings. And Wendy is obviously the board's attorney. And I just wanted to comment that she's here in reflection of the number of Iowa Public Information Board complaints that have been turned into this department. She's here. It's not, in my eyes, it's not a permanent solution. It's to guide us through some meetings to make sure we are following best practices. And I always say an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of fear. So I just want there to be some accurate information on her presence. She's here to making sure we're following policy, we're following state law as we work through a couple of these complaints. I just wanted to say thank you, Wendy, for being here. I know it's the evening. Just wanted to clear a couple of those misconceptions up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Champion. Dr. Smithson?
As I'm sitting here looking at the wall, it says, "Linking learning to life with passion, purpose, and pride, so that all students can make a positive difference." And I want to thank the three students who came forward tonight and spoke. That was not easy for them to do, and it is clear that they are making a positive difference, and they are showing their passion, purpose, and pride.
Thank you. Dr. Castro?
I visited middle school today along with Dr. Morris, and we went through the building and saw some changes that had been made there, and I think good, positive changes. It was nice to see the hall monitors there. Officer Hanson, Justin Galbraith, Kevin Frecking, and Brad Levitz out. And as I saw those figures coming down the hall if I were a young kid in someplace I wasn't supposed to be, I made sure I got to where I was supposed to be in a hurry because they are imposing figures, and I think that has a lot to do with the climate at middle school right now. And I remained a little bit for the sixth grade lunch as they were coming in. And one of the monitors that I saw there was Kevin Frecking. He has two boys there, and he just high-fives and just talks to all the kids that come in, and he knows them very well. I think that kind of helps the climate as well at middle school. So he's well-connected there. He does a really great job with all the other people as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Castro. All right. We will move on from here to 3.03. Superintendent's report. Dr. Morris?
Good evening. It's much shorter this time than it has been recently. I want to start with the pep assembly that kind of kicked off our home football game last Friday night. I want to thank our students for just their enthusiasm and incredible behavior at that event. It was just, the energy in the gym last week was amazing. Didn't realize that we had such a talented administrative team. We might have been visited by Cougar and Maverick from Top Gun singing "You've Lost That Loving Feeling," Kevin and Conrad. We might have had J-Lo in the house, also known as our principal, Kristy Kleppi, and Pitbull, also known as Zack Shea, who did some dancing with our Gold Dusters. And then, Didn't Know Law and Order also paid a visit, thanks to our dean, Anthony, and Jen. But it was just overall student council. I can't thank Christina Burrows and Katie Mahoney enough and all of our students that are a part of that group. What a tremendous way to kind of kick off the fall season of athletics and co-curricular activities. Our entire admin center team, we closed the office for an hour so we could come down and be a part of it. And resoundingly, our team here in the admin center said, "Oh, my gosh, what amazing way to end the week." So, thank you. I know it takes a lot to put something like that together. And in all seriousness, our high school admin team is pretty incredible for what they do, and their students got to see a different side of them last week. So it was a lot of fun. Run With Carl. I, too, had the privilege of being part of that event. We had quite a few. Bettendorf staff, students, and administrators participate in all different ways, from running the race to walking, to volunteering. And again, thank you to our city, our police department, and everybody that makes that event possible. I do have a short report. I want to thank our Bettendorf Community Schools Foundation. I mean, it takes a lot to put that event together, and we appreciate all that they do for us. Apparently, there were over 800, approximately 803 participants last week, which I think is one of the highest number that they've experienced. Ninety-three of children in our community ran the half-mile. There were 197 runners that participated in the five-mile, and there were 441 runners and walkers in the 5K. So that is just incredible. And our very own Donna Carlson, nurse at the high school, placed as the first female in the five-mile race. So super proud of her. And they are still determining how much money was raised, how much they grossed and netted at that event. So what a great community event. Wonderful to see our mayor and our city administrator there and seeing the race. I'm pretty sure he didn't need to huckle us as we came across the finish line. And I might have said something to him. He, of course, doesn't listen, right? But anyway. Continue to be able to get out to the schools each week. As Dr. Castro said, we have the honor of touring middle school today. That was always fun to be out and see our students. I also had the privilege of touring our state consultant, Holly Barnes, last Thursday at the middle school, and her feedback was overwhelmingly positive. So it's been great. I will be at two of our elementary schools tomorrow, touring classrooms with principals. And I have been invited to read in a classroom tomorrow as well. So I'm really looking forward to that. I told the teacher, "Are you sure? You can't promise that your class won't be out of control when I'm done." But they have faith in me, and so I'm excited to be with students tomorrow. Dr. Castro and I got to have a great conversation in one of our special education classrooms with three young men today. And that was a lively conversation as well. I think the teacher might not have been so happy after we left because it's kind of like what I hear grandparents do. They get children all wound up and then turn them back to their parents. Might have done that today.
Dr. Morris, one question. Why do they refer to you as the boss lady? They all did.
They did, didn't they? I don't know. I think it's how, when students ask who I am, teachers are quick to say, "She's the big boss." And they give the context, just like Mr. Hartley is the principal of the teachers. They say, "I am the principal of the principals." So I know those three students quite well, and we have a good time when we're together. So... And I had the opportunity to speak at the Bettendorf Rotary on Wednesday about our upcoming Pebble election on Tuesday. Great questions by the individuals in the room and tremendous support from them. So that is my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morris. Brings us to 3.04, our BEA report. Welcome.
Hey, there. Last night, we hosted our first BEA meeting of the year. We had a wonderful turnout, which is great to see. I know some of our meetings, we've just been trying to get some more people coming. So it was really great to see the people there. There was great conversation. Our big focus is remaining solution-focused for every conversation that we have and making sure that we're collaborating at all grade levels and buildings so that we make sure everything's pretty consistent with all of our building reps and all the members. So... And this year, one of our other goals is to engage each and every member and utilize our strengths and interests to continue strengthening our association. One of the ways, we are trying to align with all the area unions with forming committees and making sure that we're aligned across the state of Iowa. One of the committees that we have going on is the Special Education Committee. This committee will specialize in supporting us as leaders and all of our members that have questions regarding special education, as well as a membership chair. We have so many different committees that are going just because we, you know, I only have two arms, and I both have like 10. So we're trying to like spread it out among the strengths that our members have with the committee. So, or the committee. So another way we're strengthening relationships is between administration and our association. So I don't know if you guys know, but we encourage our building reps to meet with all the building administrators monthly so that they're remaining in communication of anything that's happening within the building and with our members. And then, we come and we have our roundtable conversations so that we're just, we're always talking. And the goal is, is that we're trying to work alongside administration so we, but as the slogan says, "Better Together." So that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. 3.05, our Vesta report. Wonder who you're cheering for this weekend?
Yes, it's part of my talk. Good evening. I am hearing great things from all over the district about the fantastic start to this school year. I know the experience at the high school has been overwhelmingly positive, and I'm hearing similar experiences from most staff and families district-wide. I do want to mention again that we continue to need additional guest staff. I can't reiterate this enough. If members of the community are interested in helping out at any building level as guest staff in any capacity, please reach out to the VCSC Human Resources Department. There are great things happening in our buildings, and we'd love to have you be a part of it. I want to quickly touch on the upcoming physical plant and equipment levy vote on Tuesday, September 13. I have seen posts and comments on Facebook and other social media outlets about concerns that a yes vote will increase your property taxes an additional $1.34 per $1,000. I just want to clarify that voting in favor of Pebble will not increase property taxes. Rather, will extend the levy that you currently have for an additional 10 years at the same rate it has been since 2003, extending the funding through 2034. Pebble funds are an important source of revenue for the district, generating over $2 million to be utilized for facility improvements and maintenance, technology purchases, and more. Vesta would like to encourage voters to get out and vote in favor of extending this levy on Tuesday. In case anyone isn't aware, I know fans are pretty low-key about this. There is a football game on Saturday that may be a pretty big deal. So for my fellow friends in the audience, I just want to go Cyclones.
Go Cyclones!
Brings us to 3.06, our student board representative. Welcome.
Good evening. Let me scroll up to the top of my notes. Hi again, everyone. I also need to reiterate, go Cyclones. I'm sorry, you've already accepted my offer for next year. Anyways, good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all again. My name is Dylan Follen. For those of you who did not meet me last week, and I will be your student council or your student school board rep this year. Joining me today, I have two juniors. I have Liv Pridemore and Carly Silver, who are learning the ropes, learning how it all goes, filling for me or to do it next year. So just wanted to start off and say that we are going all out for homecoming this year. We are really working hard in student council. These past few weeks, we have been trying to include new activities while expanding traditions. So much, so much going on. I'll get into those updates in a second. For instance, one new morale-boosting activity that student council just got approved is called Bulldog Charge Stand. This will be an energy drink stand that we... Sorry, watch my notes. During Homecoming Week, before, after school, during lunch, and during Pride, we will be selling $4 energy drinks made with zero-sugar Monsters in several different flavors to kind of bring up the morale of the student body. All proceeds go to the Hunger Drive. This past year, or sorry, this past week, several flyers and a big press release has been sent out to students and staff about homecoming info and how we're trying to wrap the middle school and elementary schools in more this year. And that also included our 2022 Homecoming shirts. Here's a poster I was requested to show everyone. These have been hung up all around the school. There's a QR code for students and families to buy these. We have two different colors and a crew neck option. And like I said, all the proceeds for this are also going to the Hunger Drive. So the theme days have been set this year. Monday for Homecoming Week, it will be Fashion Disaster, which is a mixed match. Tuesday will be Beach Day. Wednesday will be Wear Pink. But then, the fifth, eighth, and senior, fifth graders, eighth graders, and seniors will be wearing pajamas to the top of the school. So enjoy their last year a little bit. Thursday will be Dress As Your Favorite Celebrity. And then Friday will be Vet Pride and Homecoming shirts. So like I said, these spirit days are now district-wide to include the middle and elementary schools. So that's new this year. Powder Puff will be taking place. That's girls' flight football at the Tubel Stadium, the football field, Tuesday, September 20th, at 7:30. $5 admission, and they're going to be meeting and giving some tie-dye shirts ahead of time. And they're going to be meeting and giving some tie-dye shirts ahead of time. The Drive-In Movie, which will be the big event this year. Students voted for Ferris Bueller's Day Off as the movie. Yep, fan favorite. So, and it will be on the football field on Wednesday, September twenty-first. Gates open at seven forty-five, and the movie starts at sundown. This event is targeted for high school students. However, there will be a thirteen-year-old under parental consent form because it is PG-13. So, then Thursday, that brings us to Thursday of Homecoming Week, which is Parade and Float Building, that's September twenty-second. And I am chairing that committee, so any questions may be directed toward me. All participants must arrive by six, but it starts, or start, oh, sorry. Arrive by five, it starts at six. I've been in communication with the Bettendorf Police Department planning road closures, and they've requested everyone be early, so by five. And then, we have contacted every business in the parade route to let them know. We've reached out to clubs, sports, admin, elementary schools, middle school, and even the mayor. Everyone is throwing some positive reactions and excited to come. And we actually are including our middle school administration, which we have never done before. So they are going to be right behind the high school administration because we just wanted to make it the biggest, best parade yet and include more people. And like I said last year, we need jeeps and convertibles. So if you have any contacts, please send them that way, my way. And I know I have to talk to some people in this room about it because I know we have some coming. And then the Rises Friday, which will be the pep rally and coronation. Homecoming Court was selected. We have twelve, twelve individuals that were selected, ten individuals that were selected for that. They will be performing skits at the annual pep assembly, held Friday, September twenty-third during the school day. And later that night, we will have coronation at the Barstee Football Game. So they will have several rehearsals to practice. The dance will be Saturday, eight-thirty to ten-thirty. And we are asking that students either come in their socks or sandals due to the gym floor. We're not having shoe room this year, one big change. And then we're going to be going through the gym lobby doors into the gym opposed to doing through the commons. So a little bit smaller space as well. And on behalf of the entire student council and student body, I would like to shout out Christina Burrows and Katie Mahoney, our advisors, two amazing advisors that have been working beyond belief. They are full-time teachers, and then they do this. And they make every single student at VHS, like, they make the morale better. They make all the events go smoothly, and they're just an open door for anyone. So I wanted to shout out them. I, they are amazing advisors. Some school-wide updates. We have the club fair today and tomorrow for new member or new, new students and freshmen to kind of see all the different club options at the high school. The NHS Blood Drive will be September twentieth. We encourage anyone that can go to please do that. And then my final notes are about some band recruiting that happened this week. The fourth and fifth graders got to watch the marching band perform. And the middle school actually came over to the football field during marching band practice, and they got to see us perform our part of our show. And we kind of taught them how to march a little bit. So, a little bit of band recruiting. Thank you all for your time. That's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you.
I do want to commend Dylan and all of our students and student council, their persistence and thoughtfulness around including all students in our district around the theme week. We've worked with all the administrators to make sure that we are in alignment district-wide during that week. And I really appreciate their thoughtfulness around including our elementary and middle school students as well. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. And thank you to Olivia and Charlie for being here tonight as well. All right, that brings us to three point zero seven, VHS Strength and Conditioning Presentation. And I feel like I should thank Coach Siebold. I am now a morning person because of you, like a really, really early morning person. And my child now walks around our house shirtless all the time because he thinks he's getting really buffed.
And I, I just got to thank Dylan, too. The caffeine is definitely going to help me. Kids ask how I'm so lively in the morning. It's, short answer, there's a lot of caffeine. For everybody that doesn't know, I'm Coach Siebold. I'm head strength and conditioning coach here. This is year two for me. I'm also in the building, currently a PE physician, covering for another teacher who just had a baby and normally an academic interventionist. So that's kind of what I do around the building. I'm talking today just a little bit about kind of the recap from the past year. This will be like the first full year that I've been here in the head coach role. So we are just going over some, some positive things that we saw this year and kind of the direction that we're, we're trying to go with strength and conditioning in mind. So, just some, some bullet points here. I told myself I'd keep this presentation under an hour. Anyway, so this summer, Summer Fit is kind of our, our big training period. We get basically every athlete that isn't, baseball and softball, they do their in-season lifting. But we get basically every other athlete in the high school. And we had over four hundred different athletes this summer. And we averaged about two hundred and sixty athletes, different athletes per week. So it's drastically up from last year, from the first year I was here. There's some numbers on the next page that I can kind of dive further into. But some other things, too. This, this year, we had a lot of growth just from a strength standpoint, from a speed standpoint, you know, vertical jumping. We have included a lot more testing just so we can kind of have those numbers, those baseline numbers. Prior to when I was here, there was no laser timers for forty tests. There's no vertical jump mats. So we got some of those things purchased to kind of modernize what, what we're doing and look at the actual Xs and Os of, of their numbers. And then we also go by what they're doing for their, their maximum effort lifts so that we can kind of gear each individual program to that specific athlete. And I kind of have another slide to talk about that a little bit more. But just, there's some snippets of just numbers, if you're a numbers guru like I am. And then we also created a, a top-ten leaderboard. This includes both strength, speed, and jumping things to kind of, you know, try and include as many, many athletes as we can and, and support, you know, what they're doing and praise them with their, their hard work. And then we've also created a top-five leaderboard, which we are moving towards getting created so that we can have that hanging in the weight room so that kids kind of have those numbers to look at and, you know, shoot for moving forward. Also, a big thing, we hired an assistant strength and conditioning coach. He is a Bettendorf alumni. He coaches in the district. He helps coach with football. He also is a local business owner. He owns his own gym. I don't know if I can say his name or not. But he has drastically, he's came in right away and already, already made a, a big improvement to us and just more eyes, you know, just another set of eyes in there besides sports coaches and stuff that the kids are getting used to and seeing. So that's been, been awesome so far for us. And it's good, we already had a good relationship beforehand. So it's, it's been a good rolling relationship. We also started curriculum planning. So we're going through the process of, of seeing what other schools do to have strength and conditioning during a class, day in and day. Currently, we don't have that option. So athletes either have to, athletes and, and students either have to lift before school or after school. And kind of how we currently do it is in-season athletes have to lift before school or at a designated time when their coaches decide. And then out-of-season athletes or, or other students that want to get in the weight room will go right after school, Monday through Thursday. So the big thing about that, that we're trying to get that is just, you know, sleep is super important, not only from a, you know, a strength and conditioning and athletic standpoint, but also, you know, from an academic standpoint. So we're just trying to get that included into their, their curriculum throughout the day. I know a lot of other local schools have kind of moved towards that. So something that we're just seeing what they do and trying to come up with what will work best for us. Last year, we also had three middle school camps. So that was, that was a lot of fun. It was good getting, you know, younger kids in there, getting them used to kind of the culture that we're trying to build and, you know, all the process that goes along with that. This was fifth through eighth, and we, we had about a hundred and fifty different kids in there for that as well. So, you know, all the way down to fifth graders that don't, don't quite know how to skip yet, all the way to, you know, some eighth graders that are almost ready for, for high school sports. So that was, that was an awesome experience, too. Good for those younger kids to get in there and, you know, start moving properly. A lot of that's just, you know, fundamental stuff. We use a lot of like PVC pipes with no weights. We have fifteen-pound bars that, you know, we're not trying to load a bunch of weight on their back. We're just trying to get them used to some of the motions and some of the athletic movements that, you know, it takes to, to succeed at a high level. And then, I, I know I already brought this up when it happened, but we're also national award winners for a program of excellence through the National High School Strength and Conditioning Association. You know, that's, that's awesome. I think there was only twenty schools honored for that in, in the country, and we were one. So it's voted on by our peers, you know. So kudos to the other coaches that voted for us and things like that. But it's cool to get some recognition for these kids that, that have been working so hard. Yep, so there's, I guess, I don't know if I can say names or anything, but.
You can, go ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, Chad Orange, okay. So, yeah, great guy. He has already made a huge impact. You know, he's got a good relationship with a lot of kids. He knows how to, how to motivate them and helps me out tremendously. Just, you know, being able to, to control, you know, when we have a hundred kids in the, the weight room, being able to kind of space out and, you know, get more eyes is always a good thing. Like I said, alumni, football coach here in the district. So he's already kind of plugged in with a lot of these kids and knows them all. So here's me kind of nerding out on the Excel spreadsheet. So this is everything kind of, this is just a, a bulk average of every person that we tested when, when we got here, when we first got the, the lasers and the vertical jump mat. So we just got basically a baseline test at the end of last summer. And so this is just growth from, you know, one full year. You can see, you know, between the forty-yard dash times, between their max mile per hour, strength standpoint, squat, bench, deadlift. We also do power clean, snatch, push press, so other movements as well to kind of just overall see, you know, what each athlete needs and what that's geared towards. But those are the, the big ones. And then vertical jump as well. And like I said, last summer, we had about two hundred and seventy-five athletes total in summer fitness, and this year, we're over four hundred. So a lot more kids involved, which I think, you know, is kudos just to them seeing what, what we're doing and enjoying the process and buying into, to, you know, the commitment it takes to succeed. So, yeah, this is just, I won't go completely diving in on, on all of the, the data points. But every athlete, every individual athlete gets one of these cards. In the top-left-hand corner, I blanked out. But that, that is a specific athlete's name that will be in there. And it has all of their numbers, what they, what they did. So it shows their maximum efforts. We know that is one hundred percent what, what they can do on their very best day. And then, as they go through the workout, each of the specific lifts are catered to that athlete. So, you know, whether it's hang clean, if, so this athlete here, two seventy-five, hang clean. So we get percentages each, each week. It's called un Julized periodization, for those that really want to know. But, and it's kind of just, just shows, you know, up and down so kids don't adapt. And, you know, the body is extremely adaptive. So we kind of try to break that, that system and go through that. You can see there's different things that we do on there. Different athletes get different auxiliary lifts based off of what they need. You know, offensive lineman doesn't need the same thing as the cheer or the Goldusters need. So we, we change basically all, all of those based off of what they, they specifically need. And then it's cool, too, because as we look at this, us coaches can, if somebody is like, "Okay, you're a lot stronger than when you first, you know, got here four weeks ago," we can go on and change those numbers right away, and it'll automatically repopulate their sheet. We do have to print it because it's just paper right now. Later on, I'll talk about how we're trying to go to an electronic form that some other schools are using now as well. So that's kind of the science behind it, not going into the. And then, like I said, just current top-ten. So we have the girls' current top-ten. I think, might be some familiar names up there. There's a Morse girl up there. Been getting after it. But, so.
Yeah, I want to thank you. I have to hear it again, her every single night when she's sore, so thank you.
Yeah, yep. So she's been working hard, but just like everybody. So, yeah, like I said, you know, we, we keep track of all those numbers. And then we post these kind of for like current, okay, who's the strongest in the school? And then we also have just since I've been here, so it's only one year, but who's the all-time strongest? I don't know if we could go back as far and find some of those numbers. I could talk to some prior coaches that might know. But we have kind of an idea of who's been strong lately, and then we keep track of those for totals. So this is just the current top-ten girls. And then the next one, I think, is the current top-ten boys. Once again, strength on top, speed and jump on the bottom so that we kind of extend to, to both parties of athletes, whether they're big, whether they're strong, whether they're fast, trying to include everybody. And I think moving forward, we're either going to take it kind of another step forward and include some bodyweight stuff, just like pull-ups and dips, other things like that, just so, you know, because there's some kids that don't fit into either of these categories that I think would, would benefit from seeing those numbers as well. So we had our Lift-a-thon. We're getting close, I promise, everybody. We had a Lift-a-thon this past, it would have been two weeks ago, I think. It was a great, great event for our first one, kind of fundraising. You can just kind of see some of the things that we need to upgrade and vastly need to improve on, you know, between dumbbells that are broken, barbells that were kind of falling apart, plates and stuff that just have been, I don't think, a lot of this from one of the coaches I talked to haven't been updated in fifteen years or so. So just trying to, trying to promote some of that stuff, get some new things in there, get some excitement from new equipment just for those kids. So you, the, the video, this is pretty cool. This is from a, a parent that, kid that works his tail off in the, the weight room. So I don't know if you can click on that.
If you exit, so less the full screen, it should work.
It's a, it's a pretty cool video. Yeah, so this is just, and you can hear the kids all counting. Yeah, there we go.
Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Twenty-one.
Twenty. Twenty-one. Yeah!
So that was, yeah. That was our, our boy Luke. He's a. Yeah, so that was our boy Luke. He's a really hard worker and, you know, the kids, kids all hype him up well. So it's cool to see that. And he actually raised the most money out of anybody, so hats off to him for, for doing his work. But kind of where we see the program heading, I talked about some, some of this stuff. Just compared to even, even other schools around us, there is a lot more technology and stuff involved than, than what we're doing. A lot of schools already have iPads at racks. We have ten racks and platforms. I know I've talked to a lot of other schools just with this curriculum planning, and, you know, they have double that, if not more. And so that's just kind of some of the things that we're looking towards buying down the road, trying to fundraise for. Velocity-based training is kind of a new thing in strength and conditioning that we'd like to go towards. It takes the weight out of the equation, so it's all based off of your power generation. So, you know, kind of how fast the, the weight is moving and stuff is more important than, you know, the actual weight itself. It's called intent training. So that's kind of something we're gearing towards. Like I said, just more fundraising, uh, trying to, to upgrade and renovate the, the stuff we have. We'd like to further, with having another coach now, we'd like to further like specify what we're doing with the training, uh, you know, dynamics and the demands that each athlete has specifically. And then, you know, like I said, just further techno- technological advances, trying to, to push our strength and conditioning facilities and program, you know, to the highest level. I kind of put there on the end, a lot of you that have been here for a while know that, you know, Bettendorf was once on the leading edge of strength and conditioning, they had, you know, new facilities and we're at the pinnacle of, of strength and conditioning and athletics at one point. And you know, we'd like to start getting things back to that direction, so, you know, trying to find ways and try to uh, you know, fundraise to, to incorporate uh, you know, more racks, more things for the, the larger number of students that we have, we, you know, we really need um, at this point, you know, from a, just a numbers standpoint, we have ten racks and ten pa- platforms. Safely, you can have three kids at a rack and platform, um, so that's sixty kids. And you know, there's days where we have a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty kids in the, the weight room. So you know, trying to find ways to make sure everybody is safe and everybody is, you know, plugged in and getting the work that they need. And then also trying to incorporate it now into an academic standpoint, uh, you know, it's just a lot for, for the facilities that we have. So that's kind of where, where, where we're heading and uh, you know, things that, that we see in the future that down the road we'd like to get to. But yeah, so you know, recap year one, you know, a lot of benefits, a lot of good things, you know, I gotta say hats off to numerous coaches uh, are in, in there all the time working, you know, without them, you know, it'd just be me. So you know, the football program does a great job always having people in there, basketball's been doing good, you know, across the board. Anytime that there's a specific team uh, training, the coach is always in there uh, helping out, which you know, it's awesome to see from my standpoint, for, you know, safety and also from uh, you know, a, a coaches and athletes standpoint, it's good for those athletes to see those kids, uh, or the coaches in their training. And then also hats off to all the athletes, you know, without them working as hard as they do, none of those numbers would be the same. So you know, we have, very fortunate to have extremely hardworking, uh, you know, dedicated kids that are, you know, symbolize what, what we want from, you know, not only athletes, but people in general, so, thanks.
Thank you. On, on your last bullet item there, in your limited time here, what do you think is, where do you think you want to get from where we have been? What do you think is going, what do you think happened?
I guess really from, just from other, you know, calling other coaches and, and seeing what they have is just uh, you know, upgraded renovations and stuff to, to facilities, uh, you know, there's we have a spreadsheet, a running spreadsheet, um, that has every five A school and what their square footage of their weight room is, how many racks they have and how many gyms they have. And uh, you know, we're on the bo- I mean, from a statistical standpoint, we're fifty-fourth out of, out of uh, you know, compared to the rest of these schools. So you know, a lot of it, uh, I, I think at one, you know, at one point, we were at the pinnacle, um, you know, where we had the, the greatest facilities, you know. So that, I mean, that's a big thing, you know, uh, just from an athletic standpoint, kids get excited when they know they have, have the best stuff. So um, that's a big thing, uh, really, uh, you know, just facilities for a, a want and kind of a need down the road.
So I, I'm glad you said that there's coaches coming in to help you. Because in the past, it was always a struggle to get coaches to come in instead of just dumping their kids and they would leave and it was maintained by uh, academy of coaches that were in there all the time, so.
Yeah.
So I'm glad you're here, having good buy-in from the coaches, whether it be in season or out of season. If they're in there with the kids, helping supervise, not only uh, interacting with the kids, but also for the safety of the kids that are in there. Because once you have a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty kids, which is not uncommon over the years.
Right.
You need other people to help you volunteer.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, and a, and a lot of that comes to from, uh, we sit down, so we have before every end season, uh, we sit down with their coaching staff and, you know, because I, I didn't play all these different sports, you know. So I sit down with each individual coach and I'm like, okay, what does your athlete need, uh, you know, from a training standpoint? And we kind of break that down together, okay, you said they need motivational force, all right, I know how to create that in the weight room. So that's a big thing, you know, and once they know that like, you know, I want what's best for their, their program, uh, they really, you know, they really buy in, they, they want to see, you know, what they had helped uh, making for a program work. So they, they buy into that. And out of season, you know, it's been great too, I just sit down with coaches, you know, and I say, you know, I, I need a, a couple of coaches this day, that day, you know, so that everybody's in there. And we have, I mean, no less than four or five coaches in, uh, you know, every day, which is, is awesome. Says a testament to how hard they work when, you know, they're out of season, so.
So did I hear you saying earlier that you need about another three thousand square feet in that weight room?
It would be nice, we, yeah, another three thousand square feet and another probably fourteen racks would be awesome, so.
That's what I thought I heard you say. Thanks, Matt.
First, I want to know if you're gonna have your kids do some powerlifting programs from, I see those squat and deadlift and pump numbers, those are pretty impressive numbers. I think this is a pretty awesome program, and the fact that you're tailoring it to the sports, to what the students need. I mean, that's, this is top-of-the-line stuff that our kids are doing, this is not stuff that you can find everywhere. I know that there's some B F S stuff, some bigger, faster, stronger stuff in downport schools, but this is pretty impressive.
Thank you.
I think the board should, I think you should write a program for the board so we can participate in the lift-a-thon next year. I might be able to raise some money, that's all I'm saying, you're making me miss the squat and the deadlift.
I got, I got some faith in Director Eastman, they push some weight up there on the bench, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'll challenge him, I'll dust off the shoes and get back down. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta stay with it, come on. I gotta, I gotta keep up with my hair, you're making them very strong, so. No, it's a really impressive program, it's pretty awesome.
Thank you.
And I hope that when we talk facilities planning, that we remember your numbers and what it's doing for our programs, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
You've, you've done a really good job of giving a lot of other people a lot of credit, thanking them, which is well deserved. But I just want to recognize that you have a very distinct ability, that you've shown us to build relationships with the, all the different coaches and all the kids. And I think that's where, that buy-in that you see and all the coaches in the, in there helping you, it's because of what you have done and, and the assistance and the support that you give to them and the relationships that you build with them. So I don't want anybody to lose sight of how important that is, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Coach Siebel?
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, absolutely. And any of our, our teachers and students who need to cut out of here, you're totally fine, please do. It's okay, I, you are welcome to stay as long as you want, but I realize you have other obligations, so please attend to them. We appreciate you guys being here. All right, that brings us to four point zero one, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I approve, we approve the uh, consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Go for it, please.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Dora?
Yes.
Director Eastman?
Yes.
Director Lynch?
Yes.
Director P, Director Swissman?
Yes.
Director Castre?
Yes.
Thank you, brings us five point zero one, Pebble presentation, I'll turn this over to Dr. Morse.
Good evening, so we thought we would bring this information back um, to you all as our board, as well as to our community. Um, I'm gonna ask Bree to come up, since she has been the one that's kind of led these presentations. Just to reiterate again, and she will, um, you know, this is an extension of a current levy and a current tax, no increases to taxes because of this, and I'm gonna let her take it away. Thank you, Bree.
Yeah, no problem at all, um, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, Celeste. Um, again, we're gonna talk about the same topics that we've covered before, just in a different light. And if you can go to the next slide, um, again, just reiterating, it's Iowa Code Chapter two ninety-eight dot two that gives us this authority. We can levy up to a dollar sixty-seven, which we do, and we have done the full levy amount of the dollar sixty-seven. If you can go to the next slide, since two thousand and three, so this tax has been in place for roughly twenty years. The state law says a maximum that we can levy, which is the dollar sixty-seven, which is where we're at. And so the renewal is truly just renewing something that is already there, it's not asking for an increase, it's not rolling anything new on. It's just continuing the tax that's been in our district from one form or another since nineteen seventy-five. And the full dollar thirty-four has been in place since two thousand and three, um, so it's not new. If you can go to the next slide, I didn't have to update my pictures, you heard Coach Siebel talking earlier about all the lift-a-thon and the different things he's doing with our athletic programs. So we were able to use Pebble funds to help offset the difference between what the strength team wanted for equipment and what the actual cost of that equipment was. So that's just one example of how Pebble is relevant to us. And if for some reason the levy is not renewed, then those resources go away. And we can't have that program that Coach Siebel wants to build in addition to purchasing and improving grounds, uh, purchasing of technology, all of the new coffee machines that we're getting, we're purchasing those as a lease through Pebble.
Bree, can I also add? As if you recall from an earlier board meeting, when Sean McGinn, our Director of Technology, was here and shared an update in terms of what he and his team have been working on, we are now a one-to-one district, grade K through twelfth grade. Without these funds, we would not be able to be one-to-one, um, preschools, kindergarten, first grade use iPads. And in every one of those classrooms, each student has their own individual device. And then second grade through twelfth grade, we have one-to-one Chromebooks. So as to Bree's point earlier, without these funds, we could not be a one-to-one district.
Right, and you can see there, our Neil Armstrong playground got resurfaced. I think uh, Mr. Pratt has a newer, better, more ethnically seasoned picture later on in his presentation, but Pebble paid for that. And then in the next, in the next slide, um, we use those for our summer projects. Again, safety is a primary concern, if there's any trip hazards in our walks, if we have any driveways that need repair, those funds come, those resources come from Pebble. You can see again, our C N A program that we rolled out la- um, this past year, those in part were funding from S C R A, were paid for out of Pebble. And the next slide is just a visual of, like Dr. Morse was talking about, the technology, our Performing Arts Center and our buses and fleet vehicles, that is a huge piece of what we use these funds for. All of our buses, all of our fleets and maintenance vehicles, our mowers, our scrubbers that keep our facilities clean, those are all Pebble resources that Kurt and his team use. And the next slide, you can see what that breakdown is. So of those items that we've just highlighted, two point three million dollars comes from this Bogart Pebble that we're talking about. Roughly a million of that goes to Kurt and his team for operations and a million goes to Sean and his technology staff. So all of those twenty-first lunch, twenty-first century learning environments that we can provide, the technology, the safety equipment, the buses, the cardio cycle that we're now on for our, um, for our facilities, for our weight center, that also is Pebble funded. And so we've used these dollars in very strategic ways to provide that twenty-first century learning environment, to provide that higher level of expected resources for athletic programs, for our fine arts programs. So we're very purposeful and we use, as you can see, two million dollars is allocated every year. And then the additional pieces can be used for items such as our middle school roof and a portion of the cafeteria tables that we're purchasing for our middle school, the serving line. So those improvements that have improved the education and the environment for our students and staff, those are all funded with Pebble. So this is huge for our district.
So can I just ask a really quick question? Um, I just want to make this clear, this is not, we are not asking people for more money, right? And if this doesn't pass, we will, after twenty-three, we will lose two point three, at least, million dollars per year for this school. If this does not pass, it would be like cutting out two point three million dollars.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And that would force us to make some decisions that we don't want to have to make. So the next slide, yeah, of course.
But the thing is, we can go back six months later and redo, re-propose this, is that correct?
We can, so our levy is good through twenty twenty-four, and so we want to be proactive and not reactive with this. We want to have everything in place, if you can go, yeah, perfect, look at you, thank you. We want to get ready for the facility master plan, what our community, our students, our staff, what our um, district says that we need for those resources, for those environments, then we want to make sure that we have any kind of funding available that we need to provide those projects and to see them to, to fruition. So if we have to wait six months, then we are up against a tight timeline because this expires in twenty twenty-four, which sounds like a really long time, but it absolutely is not, because we're in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
One more question.
Yeah, of course.
So I know that we've sent out postcards and we've done presentations and things, do you know about how much we've already spent on promoting this levy? Because if we were to have to redo it, we would have to spend that money again, if not more, correct?
Correct, I don't have those offhand, but it's really just the postage and the supplies. I can absolutely pull it if y'all want to know, I'd be happy to do that, just let me know.
I'd also like to ask a question, because there seems to be a, a very small group of community members that are spreading false information about how Pebble can be used, so I want to clarify, Pebble cannot be used to pay legal fees, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, there are very specific things that we can purchase and those are earlier in this slide. If you go to the next slide, Celeste, we also have a Q R code which takes you to our website and that, that was courtesy of our Communications Director, Celeste, thank you for that. I felt very special putting it in my presentation. Um, but anyone here can click on the Q R code, if you've got the presentation saved or if you're watching it at home, you can click on that. It'll take you to our website, so the Iowa Code is very specific in what we can use it for, it's the physical plant and equipment levy. It doesn't include any of our management fund items and our general fund items, it's very specific on what we can do. So we ask that you please, if you're in our community, if you're in our district, please vote on September thirteenth. Your voice matters and it matters to our students. Anything else, Dr. Morse, or Ford, if you have additional questions? Any other questions for Bree?
I just have one more comment, I have a student who is turning eighteen, ah, me, twelve, and is very much looking forward to this thing.
Ask them, register to vote.
Register to vote.
Fantastic.
And just for the record, you can register at the polling place in the state of Iowa.
Yes, you can.
And you can also early vote.
You can, early voting is going on right now. And I'm looking at Celeste because she's been tracking that much better than I have, that is through.
Through Monday.
Through Monday, you can do early voting. And then our two polling places are the St. John V and E and then also the Q C Realtors.
Excellent, thank you, Bree.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hopefully that clears up some misinformation.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to five point zero two. Dr. Morse, would you like to introduce our Director of Operations?
Absolutely, last time you had the opportunity to hear from our Director of Technology about all of that, what, that small but mighty team has been working on, I've asked our Director of Operations, Kurt Pratt, to come and share um, what his small but mighty team have been working on. A little bit over the course of last year, but predominantly the focus from this summer. And um, thank you, Kurt, for being here tonight.
My forty time did not increase.
Your what, did not increase? His forty time, you can't run any faster if you're on the scene.
Not when you run around the district in a, on a mower.
No, doesn't help out. Our base project this summer was the roof restoration at Paul Norton, so it was a two-part fluid applied membrane that um, we approved back in the spring. It's over an existing membrane. Once they get to a certain age, we can do this and it puts us under a twenty-year warranty. So if we have a roof leak for the next twenty years, I call a number and they're out quickly to fix that. So that's the video of that, and it's much more cost-effective than trying to replace the whole membrane itself. So we'll continue to do that where we can, obviously we can't do that everywhere, the roof has to be in certain condition to do that. So if you want some roof photos, you're in love tonight. Big gray membrane, keep going, we're, we won't stay in any one spot very long here, keep going. So our summer, summer Pebble projects, as you all approved and budgeted uh, every spring, this is the comeback of what we did. I will tell you, I apparently am terrible about taking before photos, I'll try to get better at that. You're gonna see a lot of after photos. Keep going, Celeste. So South Park Lot, the high school, this was broken up and this is a lot of eye plow, so um, I was noticing it more and more. So we uh, broke all that up and finished that right before school starts, so that was good to get that done. Keep going. Uh, we re, didn't resurface, we sealed, um, we cracked sealed the Hoover parking lot, so it looks almost brand new, to be honest, which is surprising for the condition that lot was in beforehand. We were supposed to do that last summer, but because of construction and that work was going on, we held off and pushed it to this summer. Go ahead, Celeste. Um, this uh, starts some flooring replacements at the high school, we found a carpet that we really liked, that's uh, black and gold school theme, that seems to work out really well, so we have used that phenomenally uh, in my time here at drive high school. Keep going, Celeste. Flooring photos, a flooring photo, right, they're all safe. This is the journalism lab, I think they worked on the yearbook here as well. Shout out to Sean and his team, when um, some of the photos you'll see in the, later in the presentation, between flooring replacements and ceiling and lighting upgrades, I think we touched every computer lab in the district. So not only was Sean training a new staff, we were also giving them way more work to do as an operations team. So shout out to them for working with us.
On top of their printer initiative as well.
Yeah, so they did a lot of work this summer, I don't want that to go unnoticed. Uh, Norton, we did some flooring over there, we put in some new hard surface flooring around some sinks. We put in some new hard surface flooring around some sinks in some fifth grade classrooms, fifth grade on the left, and then I think first grade, I believe first grade on the right, I believe that's the Schmidt's room. High school, we have finally gotten rid of all the ceilings that would have been around when the building opened, Mr. Castro. Those are all finally gone.
Water stains are gone?
Water stains are gone. They're now no longer like a weird teepee-like structure. Those have all, as of this very summer, those are all gone now. So this is-
Even crack lighting fixtures are gone?
Yep, crack lighting fixtures all gone as well. So this was in the B Hall, which is the business hallway. So like graphic design and some of the accounting in those classrooms all got new ceiling and lighting this summer. Go ahead, Celeste, keep going. High school, we did a couple of things in the CTE program. So this is our auto mechanics shop. We've added a new lighting. We will hopefully providing them a new roof next summer. We'll bring that to you for approval in a future meeting. Keep going. This is the machine shop. On the right, you can see the garage where we put in last year to get some equipment in, but it's all new LED lighting. It's much brighter in there, so they can see with better precision, I hope. Welding shop also got new lighting. And then, Celeste, if you go to the next slide. We worked, you can help me out here, for part of the Perkins grant, I believe. We replaced approximately half of the welding booths. The teacher had talked to me a little over a year ago and mentioned that booths were kind of falling apart and I think they're very safe. Kids could possibly see things from an art perspective that they would be hurtful to their sight. So we built deeper booths and then provided a new curtain. So it's a much safer environment. We'll hope to do the other, the corner, around the corner next year. I think the next photo is me trying to like hold one back and take a photo at the same time, yeah. But it's, it'll be a much better setup for them, much safer. But Bree alluded to this earlier. This shot from the roof of the new playground surface at Armstrong, so that's a new rubber surface. That's actually the same color that is the new Hoover playground once we all gather over there. I don't have any photos of Hoover because I want you all to see it for yourselves in person. But that's, the, the surface was pretty worn down and we're glad to get that ported in place surface. It's a, it's a much better surface, it'll hold up a lot better. And then the last big thing we did this summer was the preschool classroom. So I had to get creative. I was covering up a window on the inside of the classroom with some cubbies for the kids. So I approached what Ms. Olson, her guidance counselor, and said, "We need to put a graphic right there and I'll pay for it," which they were ecstatic that I would pay for it. So I said, literally, you know, "Get what you want and we'll put it up." And that's the outcome. I think that's a great addition to the hallway there. This is the inside of the classroom. So this is an old computer lab, if you weren't familiar or didn't know. Sean and his staff had elected to get rid of computer labs more or less across the districts with one-to-one, that it didn't really serve as much many as they wanted to. We had a growing preschool program in the district and the existing preschool classroom at Armstrong was quite small in comparison to its brethren at Mark Twain in Grant Wood. So we kind of kicked around the idea of a couple of different places for this and landed on this. And so we took over the library office slash storage room and added a bathroom and made a larger classroom that hopefully meets their needs better. So, Celeste, if you want, keep going.
I would encourage you as a board to, if you have a chance to stop by and see the room in person, it is outstanding. Kurt, from a design standpoint, just did a phenomenal job. And now we have six preschool classrooms at each building. They each have a partner, right? So we have two programs at Grant Wood, two at Mark Twain, and now two at Armstrong. And it's just a tremendous benefit to have a job-alike partner in the same building. And I can't commend Kurt enough for the vision he had for this design and how it turned out.
You said that was the former office to the-
Because I'm a little nostalgic. You put the toilet right where my desk used to be.
There's, there was no message being sent there.
Got it. My clear.
Want that on the record. Yeah, and shout out to Colleen over there at Armstrong. She was very gracious in giving up her space and reorganizing the library a little bit so she could still have a workplace and some storage. So I briefly spoke with the teacher. I think she's very happy with it. We're still actually waiting on furniture to come because furniture is such a long lead time. So this is borrowed from another building. Go ahead, Celeste. That might be it, actually. That's the end. Any questions? The only, the one thing I'll say that-
I know, it was like-
Yeah, it's important. We, we did a few things at middle school. I guess I neglected to put some of that stuff in there. Had a couple of carpet replacements over there. Probably the biggest thing, if you've been over there, if you've been in the Student Services office, if you remember, Student Services was on one side and Guidance was on the other, which actually forces to have two secretaries because there was literally like a hole this big between the wall that they could communicate through. And Alan actually had a vision when, that was when he first started. He's like, "I think this should be one room." And he was right. I think it turned out really well, Celeste, if you want it.
I-
Yeah, maybe you don't understand.
I just think it was, it looks great and it functions better. The counselors are really happy that they can move about. We've, we've brought, we had student support staff that were in the middle of the hallway that were meeting with kids in our B hallway, which you know is a very, very busy hallway. So it was very hard for someone to come out of a, what should be a very confidential time into the middle of the hall. So we were able to put them all into Student Services so they could better be supported. And so far, our counselors and our support staff and our secretary were really happy with it. It's an awesome space.
And before we close this, I do also want to thank Arconic for their support in terms of the welding booths as well. They helped, gave financial assistance to that as well. But to the middle school, I was able to show Director Castro today. He got to see the newly renovated Student Services room. And the feedback I've received independently from staff that have offices in that area, just the, how it facilitates collaboration and conversations is, is wonderful. And they're very appreciative of that new environment.
While we're giving shout outs, the Armstrong preschool project was funded partially through the Scott County Regional Authority. We wrote a grant for that and they were gracious enough to deem that a project we're supporting with their funds. So that was a good, good offset of our expenses.
Made it so you can pay for that window detail.
Those are expensive.
They are expensive. Any other questions or comments for Kurt?
I just want to comment how, you know, maintaining our buildings and how important that is to make sure that we're on top of those kind of routine maintenance things, paint, carpet, and all that kind of mundane stuff. But what it does, it really allows our families, our students, our community to take pride in their buildings, to know that, and to feel confident that we're using that, that money that we're given in a responsible way and that we're keeping on top of all those things so we don't end up, you know, down the line neglecting our buildings and allowing things to go untended to, not to harp on Pebble, but that is part of, you know, being, being, you know, being given that, the ability to use Pebble dollars. That allows us to continue to budget for the long-term routine maintenance of our buildings for decades to come. So I think that's really, really important. So thanks for taking such a, for doing such a great job of helping us better maintain our facilities and keeping that under, under control, under timeline.
Anything else for Kurt? I know you're probably staying at the podium.
I think I am.
All right. Then that brings us to 5.03. Director Champion has long awaited this presentation. We're targeting Thomas Edison. We're ready. So we, as you know, since prior to me arriving and then during my tenure here, Edison has done an ongoing conversation. Kudos to Kurt, who continually scours our community to see if there's available real estate out there. And we keep kind of just running into dead ends, so to speak. And so over the summer, early, late last year, early summer, you tasked us with working with OPN to come up with a conceptual design, just some preliminary, what could it look like if we needed to modernize our current Edison facility? And so I'm going to turn it over to Kurt to talk you through what they have kind of given us as a first pass, a first conceptual drawing.
Yeah, so to add on top of Dr. Morse's point, this is a very much snapshot in time of where we're at with this. So I've sent some comments back on this that they've got to update. So I was trying to think of like a plane analogy to go with this. And it's not necessarily a 30,000-foot view. It's more like, we've decided we're going to land the plane, we just don't know where or how yet, but we know we got to land it, right? So very early, nothing is set in stone by anybody. Celeste, actually, if you want to hop to the next one, that's the first floor, then maybe we'll go back up to the basement. So on the left is the existing floor plan as it is. If you're unfamiliar with this, then I'll walk you through it. Main door is here, there's a sidewalk and ramp here outside. There's a conference room to the left. This is where the secretary sits and then this is the administrator's office. This is a municipal worker, I believe, but I might be mistaken on that. Outreach lives, their offices are here and then this is all storage for them. This is the former loading dock when it was a post office. So when you drive by, if you're on State Street or Grant Street, whichever one it is there, and you see those garage doors, you're looking at that space right there if you're trying to worry yourselves. This they use as like an art slash maker space right now. And then this is just all classroom space. So it has opable partitions that divide off the classrooms per se. And I think the teacher desk is all kind of congregated up in this area. So what OPN is showing is creating a new secure passenger entry, similarly, similar to what we have in our other buildings, right sizing some offices because this is an extremely large office for what it needs to be. So we're gaining some of that space back. One of the biggest pieces that we're still working through is the building needs to have an elevator. It's got two floors, but there's no way for anybody in a wheelchair to get down to the second floor without going outside to a wheelchair lift and then going down. That's not ideal in Iowa weather by any means. They're showing it right now, being inside somehow the existing building. I'm still working through that with them on that. And then we show three classrooms being added up on the main floor. We need four. We'll talk them through that a little later. They show renovating the staff break room, making that a little larger, make it a staff work room. We're still, again, working through what to do with the dock area. Because these are, most of what they're showing right now are bearing walls that aren't easily manipulated to be anything else. So we're kind of just stuck with it the way it is. So it'll be interesting to see how that discussion evolves the next time I bring this to you. And then they show renovating the bathrooms. We have very large men's rooms and very small women's restrooms. So for the age of the building, I don't know why that was. Then they show putting in some smaller conference rooms, so breakout spaces if teachers need to meet with a few kids rather than their whole classroom, they can do that. Does anybody have any questions on this part of the plan before we move to the basement level?
The loading dock, I know you said, I assume we're going to get rid of some of the garage doors.
Yeah, we'll get rid of all the garage doors. Yeah, they'll go, just a matter of what should that space really become? What's it useful for?
Is that space like a pretty cool standard part of the building or is that kind of like a warehouse space that's different?
So they've actually, they're not showing it here, they actually kind of cut it like there. So this is where predominantly their food and clothing storage is, which is heating and, it has heating and air. They've actually just drywalled over the garage door. You couldn't even tell when you're in there that there is a garage door on the other side. This is what they use for their large donations, like beds, mattresses, other furniture items. It all goes in there. So they do currently use that garage door as a dock type space.
So I will, I'm going to interject real quick about Outreach. Our Director of Student Services, Karen Allison, has been working with myself, our principal at Grant Wood, Jill Bresnan, Kurt and Sean, and the Outreach team. In some ways, to be proactive, if this is the route we go, to modernize Edison. But in other ways, to better serve our families in the district. Next week, right, Karen? We will be, the Outreach team will be relocating to Grant Wood. So when that school was built, there is a rather large room downstairs that has the capability of helping store the needed things at Grant Wood, that has space to accommodate the needs for storage for our Outreach team. As we know, Grant Wood is our most centrally located building in the district. And then how that building was built, they have a room called the Synergy Room that has office space already outlined, that not all of it's being utilized, that our Outreach team will be able to work together in close proximity to collaborate, but then be more centrally located for families and for the work that they do across the district. So we are relocating that program from Edison so that they have a little more modernized space to better serve the families in our district. Did I miss anything, Karen? Okay.
Is Outreach something that should, that usually stays in one location? In one location or, you know, five years, 10 years, we'll have more than one location for Outreach services?
So they'll have that home, Grant Wood will be like the base or the home base, but they are assigned to various schools and they're out and about between our schools and the community consistently. But then they've got a common place when they have their weekly meetings or if they're doing, when they need to meet with the family to help them secure, whether it be clothing or food or some large items, they then would do that at Grant Wood now instead of Edison.
That's not something down the road we'd need an additional Outreach space at Grant Wood and somewhere else? Grant Wood would suffice.
At this time, we don't anticipate need anything additional than, than the space that is at Grant Wood. Sorry, Kurt, I did not mean, but since you were talking about Outreach.
Anybody? Before we move to the basement? Moving on to the basement, you want to scroll up one, Celeste? So the basement, right now, the basement, well, it's got a lot of weird stuff. So extremely large bathroom, that's actually probably their tornado shelter in the basement down there. It's accessed via two ways, stairwell obviously up here and then there's an outdoor stairwell here that they're not, they didn't show the stairs on it yet. Again, they showed this elevator landing in the corner. I think we could also pull it and have like an elevator lobby and pull it there, but I'll work through that with them. Again, new bathrooms, just because it's good to update those things at the time. When we talked with them about this, and Dr. Morse and Bree and I were in a meeting on this, one of them said to us, "We're short a classroom." I said, "Yeah, but what do you want us to do in the basement?" And the more I thought about it, it might be nice, because the kids don't, right now don't have a dedicated lunch area. And so as we work with that staff down there, it could be nice to have a large group learning. If they want to pull all 70 kids together, they can do that in the basement, have a nice large space. They could also double as a lunch commons area, if you will. But then could be reconfigured if one teacher needs to have one class in there, it's got the technology, it's got the seating for it. That might be the best way to handle the basement rather than building another box, if you will, of a classroom. So we'll work through that with the design team as we progress on that. I believe it was Director Champion, I might be wrong. Somebody asked the last time, "Well, are we going to update the outside?" Yes. Do I have a good image of what that looks like right now? No. We're still working through that, but obviously the brown brace is going to stay. This, it's called EPHIS. Right here, it is right to be something new and different and bold that'll really bring a facelift to the building. So I'm really looking forward to that and what that can become. The other stuff you see on the board packet is HVAC zoning. If you're a nerd about that, great, I appreciate that. I'm happy to talk to you about it, otherwise I'm not going to bother you with that. That's just kind of- Any questions on any of that?
This is, oh, sorry, Claire. You raised your hand, so you get to go first.
I'm just wondering if we have ability to expand this at any point?
Expand the building?
The footprint of the building. I know there's some parking in the back or there's street parking, but as far as needing two more classrooms or, you know?
Yeah, so that's, that's going to be a, what are you willing to give up? Like, except the parking is tight down there. I don't remember exactly how many spots are there, but I know I have my assistant Julie Fee doing a great job. Every time she was down there dropping those, I'd say, "Count how many cars does the parking lot, because they even know that number." And it never got higher than 22, which was less than the number of spaces that we have down there. So we were comfortable that we didn't need to focus on so much to add parking. But if we were to add on to it, it would be a, are we willing to give up whatever number of spaces that might be?
And it's residential only parking on the streets.
Can we go up?
Not as it is. You'd have to demolish the building and...
No, thank you.
Do you have any kind of ballpark price tag?
That's what I was waiting for, thank you for asking that. Right now their estimate is two point two million, which is in line with what I expected to be based on my rough estimates of a similar project type.
And in line with the budget that has kind of gone along with this project since it's been discussed, probably close to three years now?
And that includes Yale Theater?
And this is a question probably for Dr. Morrison, but I do not see any library space. How do those students have access to library?
That's a great question. There, if you're in that building, there is a small library down there. It's not a, its own separate room, but they do have access to that. And they work, they work very closely with the three respective high schools to have access to that. Just like we collaborate with the three high schools around K D as well.
Yeah, I, I kind of figured that, and I know that there's obviously not room for a big dedicated library, but I feel like especially for an alternative high school, they absolutely do have access to books.
And they do.
Director Castro, you weigh some potentially?
To the west expansion?
Yes. You're talking, yeah, I know which direction you're talking. You're talking to another property owner. I have not yet engaged with them. Doesn't mean I can't or won't, just I have not.
Yeah, well, we'll talk about that.
And like a good SPO, who just reminded me, this, the funds set aside for this is being funded through Pebble. This would be a Pebble project. When and if we, if the board gives us direction to go forward at some point.
The staff statement?
Staff has not said that yet.
And what did you say first, Director?
Yeah, and there's, I mean, again, when we talk, you know, I said initially that thirty thousand foot view, like Linda, your question's great. And we'll definitely take that back to the architects, because, you know, probably two months is gonna be, you know, we're gonna make this corner the...
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
The library area, if you will, so not a ton of detail, I think Dr. Morrison and I both come into the design team. Like, we feel like we're on the right track with what the space is and what it could become. Just got a lot of refinement to do as we move forward along those lines.
But I think what we, oh, sorry, Dr., sorry, Director Lynch, one of the things I wanted to say was, you had asked us to do kind of a high level conceptual design, and before we asked them to put any more time into this, we wanted to make sure that this is still the direction you wanted us to go, and if you felt like we were off to the right start in terms of a concept.
I think it looks great, it just, I want to make sure staff have some input, knowing some confidence that they know it's a workable space.
Part of, part of the direction I gave okay when they start was a conglomeration of all the feedback and all the stops and starts we had previously. It's like, we, we, we definitely owe the staff another discussion, if this is a new and different solution to the same problem. But I took kind of the, here's the program of spaces we'd like to have and get, and said that, said what can we easily get into the building?
We certainly have invested quite a bit of time and resources into looking for potential alternative sites to sort of start from a clean slate. And I think nothing has played out, and nothing has been physically manageable. This fits within some of the constraints that we face. Can you talk to me about sort of what kind of time windows from here, like a fast track or a slow track?
Sure.
And I'm gonna add on to that too, because this will go with your answer. And what we, what that track would look like potentially, and where we will house these kids and teachers and staff?
Great questions. So, yeah, you, you understand from all your time on the board and all the construction projects you've been through, this is bigger than a summer project. It's much bigger than a summer project. In an ideal world, we keep moving on this, we try to bid it this spring to start construction this summer. The nice thing about this, given that it's an existing building, hopefully we can navigate some of the lead time issues we're all seeking in construction right now, because we, we've got a lot of components, it's mostly gonna be drywall and ceilings and lighting and some of that stuff, a little bit of mechanical work and on and on. But we're not gonna, like, if you remember the Hoover Project, as soon as we accepted the bid and moved on, it was like, great, you're not gonna get your steel until December, when we needed it in September, so we had to navigate that, right? So hopefully, we won't have as much of that with this, given the scope of the project and what it includes. I, as Dr. Morrison and I, whenever we talk about this project, I always say, saying that we're gonna have to find a spot for them. To tell you I had even an inkling and an idea of where that might go, I'd be lying to you. If you have a great idea, I'm ready for it.
Maybe to lease some space?
Yeah, yeah, we will, ultimately we will end up leasing space somewhere, similar to the way the Ross College went with Mark Twain, it's just a matter of where and how long and what. I, I would hope similar to the way Mark Twain was, we just need to find something for the fall semester, then we can move in in January, that would be my hope.
So a short timeframe would be, we get started May, June, and I'm hoping to have complete final approval.
Correct.
A longer timeframe would be?
The following August would be more realistic. Some of it, and some of it might really, the elevator might drive it.
And working from backward to where we are now, what kind of timeline do you need to be ready for us to decide if we're approving and operating? Like, when do you think this might be an action item?
Yeah, so I would say probably we owe ourselves one more refinement of this and a truing up of the cost estimate that goes with it, just so that you all have an idea of what you're gonna spend on it. Because I haven't seen the math behind the number that was given to me, I've just been told, hey, this is where we came out at with it. We owe ourselves that, so ideally I would say maybe the first meeting October, probably the second was when we would probably need to say, you know, this is what we're doing, we're, we're going forward and moving on with this. And depending on how it goes, and talking with OPN or whoever the selected design firm might be, it may need to be that we need to release bid packages similar to what they do as a construction manager. I'm not gonna talk going down that route necessarily, but we can get a demo package put together, we could get that bid out, so that we can get on schedules, so that truly when, you know, kids are out on June fifth or whatever the date is, June sixth, hammer, start swinging and get going. We could do it that way at BP. But that's a, questions we all have to answer as we keep rolling down this.
And we may not know for a while if we're on the similar target for the August part.
Right.
Any other questions for Kurt? This is what you were hoping to see, like, did we?
Yes. There will only be prettier images moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, bring us more HVAC.
I got any guests that you're staying, are you staying up there? Or is Dr. Morrison, I'm gonna take this one for you. That brings us to five point zero four, Facility Master Plan. Yeah, so we're pretty much, just like the Edison project, kind of in the somewhat infancy stage of this, and I'll defer to Kurt and Bree. Feel free to jump in, and I love my SPO, she's so good at making sure I have all the information, thank you. And feel free both of you to jump in at any point in time. So we wanted to bring you up to speed on some things going on with the Facility Master Plan. Celeste, if you'll go to the next slide, please. So we had an initial kickoff meeting, Kurt, Bree and myself, with the team from OPN in June, just to kind of talk about what work needed to be done this summer, kind of get a feel for what we were looking for in the process. Over the summer, they were busy working on doing the physical assessments of all of our facilities in the district. And then last week, the end of August, we had a steering committee meeting with the team from OPN, as well as Kurt, Bree and myself, where we kind of got a preliminary view. They wanted some input on what that format or that outcome would look like in terms of reporting out on the physical assessment. So we gave some input on that. They're still trying to compile everything, because as you can imagine, I mean, they're down to the nitty gritty of everything from lighting to the fire alarm systems in buildings, I mean, you, you name it, they looked at everything. And so they're working through that to finalize that, so we are ready when we kick off our District Facility Advisory Committee meeting, the first meeting in October. And in terms of that, as you've seen on the different social media outlets, thanks to our Director of Communications, and in the vet update this past week, and through the staff bulletin boards, we are soliciting input and interest for those who might wanna serve on this Facility Advisory Committee. We're looking for a cross-section of stakeholders that are committed to a very quick timeline and digging in and working with OPN, myself, Kurt and Bree, to really dig in and look at where we're at in terms of current facilities, and where, where do we need to go, what are our priorities? And really working with this committee, would work with the board to identify, okay, here's the needs, and how do we prioritize that, right? Because we know, like any good Facility Master Plan, you can't do everything at the same time. You have to figure out a way to prioritize the needs, down to, at the end of the day, what are some things we might want, right? So we've asked for anyone interested to serve on that committee to have that input into us by this Friday, September ninth. If you have questions about that, our Director of Communications, Les Miller, can answer those, or I can. Right now, we anticipate approximately four meetings between October and December. After that, we'll reassess where we're at, what the need looks like. We will also be having a board development workshop on Monday, September twenty-sixth, I had to make sure I got the date right. So you all, we'll bring you some additional information. We'll be looking at some of what OPN has looked at from a physical assessment standpoint, as well as kind of talking about after we have this plan, what are those next steps? What does that look like in terms of financing options, et cetera? Bree, Kurt, have I missed anything so far? Okay. Also, at the end of last year, OPN came in and met with our entire leadership team, just to kind of give them an overview of what the process was gonna look like and where their leadership would come in and input would come in. In September, OPN, we had a day set aside where they will be meeting with five of our buildings. So middle school, high school, Neil Armstrong and Herbert Hoover. Grant Wood and Mark Twain are new, you know, think that they have any, you know, major needs at this point in time, they were just built less than five years ago. And obviously Edison, we're working through that process. So what'll happen is we've set aside ninety minutes for middle school and ninety minutes for high school. That administrative team will meet with Kurt, Bree and I, and the OPN team, to kind of look at and talk about needs in their buildings, to bring them up to what we call twenty-first century learning environments. That information will be compiled along with the physical assessments. And then in, at the beginning of October, we're finalizing that date, we will be kicking off the Facility Advisory Committee. We're anticipating, as we work with OPN, that that team would be about twenty-five to thirty members of our community, of various, between district staff, community members, parents, guardians. And then that committee would give updates after each of their meetings back to the board, so that you could stay in that process. One thing, yeah.
Can I ask a question about that District Facilities Advisory Committee? So you said about twenty, twenty-five people?
Twenty-five to thirty.
Okay. Can we, can we try to make, are we taking strictly volunteers? Or I think it would be kind of important to make sure that we have at least a staff member from each of the buildings affected? And then a parent, you know, like, are we, are we gonna make sure that there's representation for all?
Representative from all, yes, all sites, in terms of from the athletic world, because we have those kind of facilities, absolutely. We will make sure there is definitely a repres, there is representation from all assets of our district. I also wanna make sure we have representation from community or staff and or parents of students with disabilities, because that's a large part of how we develop our facilities as well. So, for example, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna accidentally leave a group out tonight, but we definitely wanna make sure that we have equal representation to the greatest extent possible. OPN has recommended committees of about twenty to twenty-five, we'll play around with that number as we see fit for our district. It's one of those balances where you, you definitely want cross-representation, and you want enough people to give input and, and really wrestle around with the needs. But if it gets too large, you will also lose the ability to get a focused plan in place. And we hope that those selected will be ambassadors for the groups that they're selected for, and will, in between meetings, get input from those, you know, from others that they have those connections with.
Have we had a large response to that yet, to be known?
Currently, I just got a text from our Director of Communications, we have thirty-five that have responded to this survey. Look at that, getting pumped information all the time, and you think I was just checking the scores of the football game? And I was not. I know, sorry, Director Castro, I could probably text my husband, he was probably watching that.
I, I did see actually a, a short article mentioning that call for volunteers in the UC Times during this week. The word is getting out, and hopefully we'll be able to cross-section the people who are willing to give their time to this.
Absolutely, but that is our goal. Is there another slide to this? Here is a ti, a very, very cursory timeline that we've kind of worked through OPN with, it will adjust. We kicked off kind of the middle to end of May, through the summer, was that research and assessment phase, right? Where they were digging into plans, walking buildings, looking at the physical assessments. Now is where we need to prioritize and conceptualize, that's where this committee comes in, that's where you all come in, in terms of, okay, here's what the assessments and the research say is where needs are, where do we go from here? What is this ten-year plan gonna look like? Our goal, it's a very fast timeline, but you know me, I love to, you know, shoot big and then make adjustments as needed. Is that going into the winter break or very shortly thereafter, we would be looking at coming in with a proposed ten-year plan and present that to this board for input, feedback, and hopefully approval. And then from there, after our board development workshop, what are the next steps look like? How will we fund these projects? That this committee and you determine where we're gonna go over the next ten years. Kurt, Bree, did I leave anything out? So we need to finalize those members for the committee, and then, like I said, we've got a board development workshop. We've got one next Monday, and you're just gonna love spending so much time with me. Just around a second in follow-up to last week's board development workshop. And then the following Monday, we'll be together, and that specific focus is around the Facility Master Plan process. Other questions? Or Kurt, Bree, anything else you wanna add to that? All right, we, I think that's it now. We should jot down the three thousand square foot gym edition for Coach Sebel. All right, moving to five point zero five, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve five point zero five.
And a second, please. Would you like to come up? Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna take a chance, y'all, I don't even have my computer, so don't make it difficult. So we have been cranking through the seven hundred series, this is brought up just because it was in a recent primer. And so what it does is it just adds the IASV sample language, or if we wanted to take teacher leadership supplement funds and move them into a flex account, if you wanna open up the policies, Celeste? The flex account is not something that we currently use, it would have to be an administrative recommendation to the board. This just updates the policy to line up with how the law changed. And you can see in the bottom, it references a new legal reference two fifty-seven dot ten. So if, let me see, here she can research that one. What questions can I answer?
So can I just ask the teacher, teacher leadership supplement, can you explain what that is?
Yeah, so that's the additional funding that we get for our teacher leadership program. And there are some districts that have very large balances. And if this was something that we were ever being utilized, you would have to prove, I've met all the objectives of my teacher leadership program, I have met all of the goals outlined by the Iowa code, and therefore we're moving it to a flex fund. I don't anticipate that a recommendation would ever come to the board, that's not to say that it couldn't. And this really just lines up with what the new legal, legal code says.
So there's really, as, as I read this, sort of two substantive changes. The second is what Director Smithson just pointed to, and I actually have some questions about that myself.
Sure.
Which is, because the first substantive change is allowing repayment to be until October first, instead of having to be completed by July thirty-first. Is that, is that tied to sort of our reconciliation period?
So that's, that's just within that code language. It just has that specific date.
But it just gives a little bit more time to repay back funds. That seems utterly uncontroversial to me.
Yeah, I don't anticipate it's anything that we would ever have to utilize.
But even if we did, it's not problematic.
Correct.
But I, I, I am a little curious about, uh, I know this has been a move that the state has been making in recent years to sort of try to de-silo a lot of the funds that they say, you can only use this money for this, and that money for that, and the third pot for the third thing, to sort of say, you know what, you can bring these together and find ways to use it.
Correct.
But it does seem concerning that teacher leadership, clearly essential to sort of, I think, the success and thriving of our classrooms, could be cycled away from. How much money, do we typically have unexpended balances in our TLS budget, or do we use it and supplement it from general fund?
We, we allocate our teacher leadership money. Do you want to speak to it at all, Dr. Morse? I mean, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, I mean, Bree and I have worked very closely. Um, when I first got here, we had a little bit of an overage, uh, or not overage, meaning we expended more than we had been given. This year is an unusual year, given some last-minute staffing changes. We anticipate we'll have a little bit more unused. However, um, we also feel it's a tremendous opportunity to reflect on our plan and to say, okay, with the new means of students, um, how do we best serve them? And how do we best, um, develop those teacher leaders, as the intent of this code was, I think it's been in place about ten years now, this funding? And so we, typically, as we look at the history of this, as Bree and I have talked now for the two years that I've been here, um, we've pretty much, um, come in almost break even. Um, we're pretty good about, um, expending those resources that the state gives us, um, and making sure we're also mindful of that and not overspending and having to tap deeply into the general fund. And so, as Bree said, I agree with her. We don't anticipate we would come due and say we have this large surplus. Our first commitment is to ensure that the funds that the state had originally allocated to, um, develop teacher leadership, um, would be used solely for that purpose and not other reasons in the district. I don't know if I answered, or anything else you wanna add, Bree?
No, I, I think you put it beautifully. That's exactly what I would've said, yeah. Yes, sir.
Are the strikeovers and the additions in RED, is that part of the trimmers that we get, or is that locally generated here?
That's locally generated. That's just whenever I was reviewing the policy, showing the, what's being removed and what's being added. But the language is based on what's in the primer or the IASB recommended language.
So when we get other policies, like just the strikeovers and the newly added REDs, that's locally generated, locally generated things, okay?
Yes, sir.
But from a formatting standpoint, Director Castro?
Right, it's just the track changes.
In terms of the language additions, in this policy, it is what IASB's recommended languages to align with the new code that was updated in the last legislative session. Did that clarify?
Yes, thank you.
Now, and I think we do a pretty good job, sometimes, um, in addition to what IASB is recommending, we will add some local context, because it best serves our district, right? We can't detract from what the law says, but we can add to or enhance to meet local context. And I think this team does a phenomenal job of differentiating what's IASB recommended language and what's district-added language. So hopefully, did that clarify?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
I have just one more question.
Yes, sir.
If there are overages in that teacher leadership, I'm sorry, if there are unused funds, clarify that.
Sure.
In that teacher leadership now, what happens to them currently?
It carries forward. So because it's categorical funding, we have to keep that separate. Unlike our district, a finance loves a good silo, so we have to account for that, um, in the specific fund that is allocated in that specific categorical context. So it rules, we've got a specific project code for our TLS money.
And, I guess, one more, I'm sorry. Um, and if then we were to, we approve this the way it is, if that will continue to happen unless you bring a recommendation for us to approve this
Yes.
as a change moving forward.
Yes, and I, I appreciate your conversation and your questions, because it's very similar to what Dr. Morse and I had when we were discussing this policy. Yeah, well, and here's the thing, is you have to remember, this would have to be an administrative recommendation. Dr. Morse would have to come to you and say, hey, guys, I really think we should just get rid of everything in here and spend it on tweakies, I don't know. And you, as a board, would have to say, that's a fantastic idea, what a better use of the funds. That, that's not gonna happen. So there are checks in place. It would have to be an administrative recommendation and a majority board action to do this. And then the same thing, if we were to use those flex funds, it has to be an administrative recommendation and a majority board action.
And what specificity of how those funds will be used, with a rationale?
Correct, and the law is very specific in terms of what you have to have in your board agenda item and what that motion would have to look like.
So, so Director Smithson's second question was actually mine, so it's good that you asked it for me, thank you. To summarize my understanding of this third, second substantive change, it brings us into accord with state law, which is a positive thing, to avoid this complication, and it creates the theoretical possibility for a transfer of unused funds at the end of the year. It does not enable that transfer. That requires a completely separate and distinct board action. This just means, if it were to be proposed, we could do it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. Any other questions for Bree?
All right, non-roll call.
Dr. Norder?
Yes.
Dr. Easton?
Yes.
Dr. Lynch?
Yes.
Dr. Peovich?
Dr. Smithson?
Yes.
Dr. Castro?
Yes.
Dr. Tuvia?
Yes.
Thank you, Bree. All without your laptop. All right, that brings us six point zero one. I believe we have a change right off the bat. Um, the board development workshop is going to be held on Monday, September twenty-sixth.
Actually, that's an addition, not a change. The nineteenth and the twenty-sixth.
Yes, I apologize for that. Thank you for the clarification. The nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, we're spending a lot of time together. Okay. Um, any other additions, changes beyond the addition of the twenty-sixth?
I don't see homecoming on this calendar.
It's the twenty-fourth?
Dylan, we failed you, I'm so sorry. Did I get homecoming up there?
What's the date?
The parade is September twenty-second.
That's the Thursday.
Thursday, September twenty-second is the parade. Um, as Dylan so nicely asked us to be present at five PM over at slash Landing for the parade that will promptly start at six PM. Homecoming pep rally and game will be on the twenty-third, and the dance is on the twenty-fourth.
Did I get it right, Dylan?
Yes, I would love to reiterate that, um, student council's so happy that you guys could join us for the parade, so thank you.
All right, any additions? Seven point zero one, sir. Thank you, everyone.